Oh. Yeah, that I?
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We're moved in saying to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, so same sign. Motion carries. First up is the National Migrant Conference Travel Debrief. Probably should slide a.
Oh, the microphone. Actually, we grab that mic and move it over.
So.
I do have a couple pictures if you guys would like um from us that way.
Yeah, please.
That'd be awesome.
As you know, we went to the National Migrant Conference, something that we do every other year. We try to do that every other year. This year, we had a new set of PAC officers. It was impeccable timing. So they went and they had a lot of training. We also took some administrators and the rest of the migrant team as well. And overall, there was a lot of information, a lot of great opportunities to reconnect with our colleagues at the state level, also at the national level, and then obtain multiple resources to bring back to Project School District as well. But I wanted to open for our officers so they can share with you some of the things that they brought back.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sandra. I'm part of the migrant program. These are my fellow PAC members. Anna's here. Sylvia's not with us right now. I wanted to share with you guys a little bit about our conference in Portlory. It was filled with many speakers coming from different places to present to us. From being bilingual and letting us know bilingual is a superpower. Finally, financial aid and college applications for students and parents. And also their experience with the migrant program. Each and every one of us came back from the conference with information. We feel so much confident more in the migrant program as sometimes we don't know what it is. I came back believing in so many things and I'm so glad to have a leader like Eric in the PAC program. And advocating for us and us advocating for our children and everybody else's. We want all parents to understand the migrant program is designed for us and our children.
Great, thank you.
Mi nombre es Ana Romeno. Soy del comité del programa PAC. Y me gustó mucho ir a la conferencia porque aprendí muchas cosas. Que no sabía que había muchas ayudas, muchas becas, cómo hablar con nuestros hijos. Cómo lo importante de que ellos se metan como en los deportes, que asistan a la escuela. Muchas ayudas que hay y que uno no sabe y por eso fuimos para saber y venir a decirle a otros padres que sí se puede. Que podemos apoyar a nuestros hijos para que haga lo que ellos quieran hacer en su estudio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to tell you, I'm going as a superintendent. I think Eric will share. There weren't many superintendents there.
Nope.
Yeah.
This was the first time this meeting of our Project School District superintendent came. We've had the assistant come in prior years, but cross her superintendent this day. And she also got to meet the director of the migrant program from state.
And the state and the people from, you know, and the national programs and different things that were there. I have to tell you. When I walked in. It felt so family and parent driven, I think is the piece. That they really were trying to help the parents understand the bridge between what the school can do and how to get the parents involved in doing that. I think the piece for me, when I did my breakout sessions, I am listening and looking for things related to rules, regulations, are we meeting our requirements and different things like that. I think it was fun. We laughed. She did some funny things, right? I mean, I think it's part of relationship building as well. So I just, I think it's a really great opportunity for anytime, especially it's close. We take as many as we can when it's close. And I, I think it was really good for me and my learning as well.
And the other thing I wanted to highlight was we had one of our own actually presenting.
Yes. Yes, she's, she did a great job. Yeah.
So last year, we started our inaugural leadership bridging program from eighth to ninth grade with ESD 123. Fellow school district. This year, we're expanding out. It'll include, I believe, North Franklin, Kyoto Benton, ourselves, Othello. And I'm not sure, but I think Richland might be also joining us this session. So it's beginning to grow. This mother has taken on a huge leadership role in that. I'm extremely proud of her work.
I'm so glad you said that because that presentation, what'd we go to? Five breakout, six breakout, something like that? The ESD, they just did an amazing job. And the people who were in the room didn't want to let you leave when it was done, right? There were tons and tons of questions. Wouldn't you agree to that? And they were surprised how much you took on yourselves to make this happen.
There's, there's an actual outdoor camp on the west side of Mizzou, but we were not able to access that program for our students. So it became kind of a hot button issue for me. And so in collaborating with ESD 123, we were able to create this opportunity for kids. We go to North Bend Rainbow Lodge.
Rainbow Lodge.
Rainbow Lodge.
Rainbow Tribe.
Yeah. It's really great and kids, the biggest thing, and I wish everybody could see this and perhaps maybe we can post it, but the responses from the students at the end of the presentation, they express how much it meant to them, what they learned. And then the advice they have for incoming freshmen to participate, to engage, to not be afraid, to ask questions because you're going to come up first.
Get relationships they built with the kids from Athol as well. Because normally the kids that can stick with themselves and just people that they know, but they were able to build really good relationships with Athol.
It's a good program.
And they collaborated on other projects as well beyond that. It's a great opportunity. Hopefully, the next opportunity comes up and if you guys are available, you should. Thanks.
Thank you.
If anybody had any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you for bringing the slides. Oh, yes.
Bye.
Have a good night. All right, moving on to discussion items. HR budget. Delise, is that?
So we're gonna, Delise and I are gonna set the tone. Right, we're gonna, she's gonna share what she's got and we're gonna kind of set the tone. This is about learning tonight. We may not have all the answers to the questions you may have, so we wanna we're gonna take lots of good notes and we're gonna prepare accordingly. And I think you have some stuff you're gonna pass out. Did you bring the?
Uh, I emailed it. Oh, yeah, they have.
Oh goodness. Do you have access to your email? When did you email it?
Like forty-five minutes.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
I can open mine and if, did you bring a lot of stuff with you?
So I, I emailed the PDF version of each account code distribution. So you'll see it on the screen.
So we need to blow that up way big.
Yeah.
Way.
Uh, no. Delise, is this why you emailed? Like, we can look at it on the screen and then that's.
Yeah, for me, I. Can you make it bigger?
Yes. Just slide far over.
That's pretty good. Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah, we.
And you just, just double click on that.
Contracts, like the order happened on my floor.
Okay, you got the floor, girl.
Okay, can you go to the left and start with funding source, PSC, the PSC.
Is this what you sent, please?
Yes. So the, the not pay up, if you go to the left, a couple, it's gonna be like three more. There's a bunch of tabs to your left. Oh, I see. This one. Uh, the, uh, two more. Security and then PSC, yep.
ESE, is that what we're looking at?
Yes. Okay, so I separated these out.
Go a little bit bigger. So that, like, there you go.
Perfect. Um, okay, so I separated these out by group for.
Do you want to stand up?
Classified and certain, sure.
Because I think that'll make sense to somebody who's, right?
Okay.
Just don't touch it or if you touch it, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't touch it.
So I separated out each group. So each classified group, it's a different race. They each have different supplemental contracts. They each have a different IPD along with certain positions have, have bargained a dollar increase, a fifty cent increase depending on where you're at in the salary schedule. So this is PSC and I'm hitting all the names. So these are each of the positions that we have. All the way down. This is the combined total of benefits and so, and each of these have a different schedule also. So we have bus drivers that work two hours a day, three hours a day. So that's why they're all different. And then I broke it out by funding source. So some of these paras are multi-funded. Some of them are basic ed, bilingual.
Can you show them those codes versus the column over here?
Yep, so on this side, I created a pivot table. And it took all of the amounts for each code and put it into one. So this is the cost of our classified library staff, and this is benefits and salary. Classified principal staff, so like secretary. Basic ed safety, that's a lot of our paras who do recess duty. Basic ed health, so different paras, health room assistants. Basic ed teaching is admin assistance, but a lot of that's going to be put into twenty-three and like the business office. So TK teaching, this is our paras for TK. And then special services, I, it's supposed to be health, either or, staff in our health room. This is the cost of our paras for sped. That does not include PK. So those are both sped. This is actually sped also, so the three V are sped. Behavioral specials, this is our SSA program, our new program. IDG is another sped program. And those all get funded. We get funding for all of those. This is Title One, Title Two, which is more professional development. Migrant counseling, migrant teaching, lab, lab high poverty. And then more bilingual. This is our business office. Charges as well. And this is going to be your maintenance, all maintenance custodial. This is tech. This is food services, and then this is our transportation. Scroll down for a total of six point eight million for PSC. And this is including the IPD and all of the increases that they bargained in their unit. It includes VIBA, it includes all of their supplementals if they have one, if you have any licenses.
We build in, so let's talk about this bargaining unit. Their contract we did last year. So this, we don't rebargain with them this year. This is what she's referring to is everything that was in that contract that we did last year. So this is language in there. We take into account some of the, people get a shoe allowance for maintenance and all of those expenses are figured in this number. This number probably looks different for the two of you that have been here before and to, to some who haven't, this looks different. We're trying to present it. Very comprehensive, very deep numbers, not just a total. We wanted you to see on the left. It really is by person. So if you go, I, I don't know how many call or rows it is down deep. I mean, it like there's thirty-four, I mean, like, I don't know. It goes way down, right?
PSC is our biggest group.
Can you walk me through that left-hand side? What am I looking at there? So like, in the, in rows three through five, let's say, what are those three lines? Is that a person?
So they're going to be their names and then I separated out by their salary amount, their increase, the benefit. So that, that's all, I would unhide it, but if I unhide it on the screen right now, it's gonna show.
Oh, no, I don't need you to unhide it, but like, is, is bus driver one person? And then bilingual paras, the next person.
Position, that's position. Every single one of these is a position. This is split because it's split funded. So this is their total salary right here and then it's split between a certain percentage between these two codes.
So a lot of our paras are paid under more than one account.
Most are.
But let's just use number, row four. Their total salary is thirty-eight thousand two fifty-nine. Part of it is five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight to code twenty-five. See that? And then thirty-two thousand is to code twenty-seven. Okay, I just want to, I thank you for asking that, but that's.
The five thousand part is probably playground. That's why it's oh one hundred, basic ed. And then the sixty-five hundred is bilingual.
Can we, can, um, can you send us a list of these codes?
Absolutely.
But you've got, right?
You would love.
With a definition?
Oh, yeah, but that's.
What's the name?
Not, not the name of the person.
No, no, the name of the code.
Like a code.
It tells you like.
Yeah, yeah. Nine, that's three funding sources, correct?
So that person is in basic ed, so playground, they have title one and they have bilingual.
Basic ed one hundred twenty-two. Basically, basic ed, safety, basic ed one hundred is twenty-four. So if you go down here to, let me just show you.
Do you happen to have the bloody?
A is twenty-four hundred, but twenty-seven is teaching, C twenty.
To like translate in, in your pivot table there, how many FTE that equates to for each of those rows? Like, for example, that basic ed library two twenty-one, how many people is that?
I can, yeah, I do have FTE on this separate spreadsheet. I can get that to you. So I was just gonna show what I was gonna show Jason here. So see, that's basic ed. We call that oh one hundred. And C library, that's twenty-two. So I'm gonna use teaching as an example. Basic ed is one hundred, teaching is twenty-seven. But if you go down here, special service is twenty-one hundred, but teaching is twenty-seven.
Okay, so there's the code.
Yeah, but I, and.
There's the key, got it.
There's more.
But there's more, but I just meant that's that basic understanding.
Yeah, there's more.
Have I sent, have I sent the new board members a chart of accounts? Do you guys have?
It should be.
In our binder, probably.
That would, that's where that information is?
Yeah. I mean, that chart of accounts is kind of difficult to read, so I can create something a lot simpler. I can do that for sure. It's really easy. There's not a lot.
Well, you can do it after the budget, so you got more time to, right?
Point eight million for PSC. And actually, can you do security? And then can you make? Get paid the same. They're all on the same level. They do have a stipend, which is included in their annual. Security, we have five guards. They work one hundred ninety-one days a year. This is another basic ed code. To get some funding, some apportionment funding from the state for them, but it's bare minimum.
Let's pause right there too. So you have a bunch of meetings scheduled and this one's about staffing. And then we have one about MSOC and then we have one about revenue. So when she talks about the funding and when we have the revenue meeting, she'll be able to show you where that portion, small portion comes from. And you'll see, then you'll have all the tools and you'll see how much, what a small amount we get for security.
I'm going to do my final budget presentation. Really just wanted you to see the nitty gritty and what goes into grading the budget. And I'll find to have to be when doing it. Okay, so this is security. Can you go to ESP?
I have a question. Can we see the benefits? Every employee gets the same basic set of benefits. That's like healthcare, is that, is that who's retirement?
So it depends. It depends on if you're a teacher or if you're classified. So teachers' retirement's a little bit less this year than classified, the benefit portion. But other than that, it's about thirty-six percent straight across for a full-time employee.
So like, we've been talking about this in different meetings, like the VIBA amount is different for a classified versus a teacher versus a principal. So when she shows you the benefits, that's appropriate to, or that takes into account consideration each bargaining unit's own.
That would include VIBA too.
Yep.
Yes, yep. Okay, so this is ESP. So this is like our admin assistance, our fiscal staff. And so they get stipends. They have an education stipend, a longevity stipend, depending on how long they've been at the district. They get a responsibility stipend. Our transportation secretary gets a stipend for being on call. And so that's their base. The benefits are included there. And then, I mean, they're all basic, they're all basic ed except for the special services secretary. So actually, go over a little bit, funding. So in total, they cost about seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Oh, I'm sorry, one of them is paid out of Title One.
Can you show them where you're, where you're seeing that from? Would you just point?
The Title One and basic ed. So we have Title One here and then this is sped for the special services secretary. And then the rest of these are paid out of basic ed. So food and transportation, but we don't get funding for those. So it's all, all. And then this is district-wide. And district-wide owed a lot to people to district-wide because it's, they support everything. So like, our payroll person, our fiscal specialist, it's not really a basic ed position. And this, this also is what they bargained. So it wasn't an open bargaining here for them. That's still, you're gonna pay off next. These are all our secretaries at the, at the schools. I have their locations there. Their funding is a little across the board also because you have CP. So this one up here, CP. Big top is gonna be our principal secretaries, our athletic secretary, special services. Then some more funding, I don't know why. People don't come by those, don't know why. And then migrants and bilingual. So I think that this will be gone. We might be able to save money there.
Which one, please?
The sped.
Oh, yes.
Yes. But I did include that there for, for cost. Okay, so unrepresented. We have a few staff members that are not a part of a union. It's because they're confidential employees.
Let's talk.
Does that mean?
Okay, I knew that. So I'm gonna use my administrative assistant as an example. They're considered confidential employees. They don't belong to a bargaining group so that the information that they're shared, their decision-making and their part, and what they share inside a bargaining unit, they don't belong to one, so they don't have a stake or a dog in the fight about what decide, is decided within the union. Does that make, make sense? So they're called confidential employees. What they know, what they do, they're, they represent themselves and.
There's, we, our nurses are also on there. Our nurses were previously under our teacher's contract. But we could not, we were not competitive. We had to repost that job multiple times last year because we can't compete with the salary they can make in a hospital. And we were gonna start the year with no nurse and we couldn't start the year with no nurse. So we ended up, we had agreement with the union and now I think it'll be kind of long-term that they, we have to keep them out because we can't pay them. That's the same way, because what happens is for experience, if you've worked in the private sector, we can only count two years. So if you're, if you're a nurse and you've worked, and our nurses have worked both twenty or more, like a lot of years, we can only count two. So then they're gonna go way backwards. And so we, we just couldn't, we just couldn't do it and be competitive, so.
We had an MOU with the, the teachers' union where they had been listed before to pull them out of that bargaining group.
And that's what a lot of districts are doing to compete.
You can't financially, I mean, a nurse isn't gonna leave a job to compete.
So they negotiate their contracts, not on a salary schedule. So depending on what they negotiate, some get an education stipend, longevity stipend, responsibility stipend, and a translation stipend. Again, this is their annual, this is their benefit amount. So this is the total we pay per employee. So a piece that comes out of migrant and the rest is.
You might have already answered this and I missed it, but so these employees, how does, how's their salary adjusted, like annually, if they are not represented by one of these other contracts?
So we negotiate their contracts with them, but right now we're only giving IP. So this is their salary this year plus the three point seven.
So just negotiated directly with the employee?
Yep. Each year I meet with them as part of their yearly evaluation and we make that plan for the following year.
Are the RN the most educated employees of this group?
Yeah.
Let's see.
For their job requirements.
Oh, for the job requirements, yes. I don't think any other position requires that.
No, they don't require, but, but are, both my assistants and Kim's have, have degrees.
And the main difference you're seeing in salary is number of days worked.
Yeah.
So two hundred and sixty days versus a hundred and ninety. So one, that's one thing. I kind of sometimes, I'm just gonna tell you things that catch me up, catch up. Yep, I look at that and I go, why is an RN nurse, right? But if you look at a hundred and ninety days and you look at that piece, look at their hourly rate. Column F. Um, call them F or excuse me, E. That kind of gives you a better idea of what their hourly rate. Um, when we have to pay them per D, per D M or extra time or whatever, that's that rate. Cause that catches me sometimes too. I'm looking at that and going like. What's up with that?
So the total amount for them is about five hundred and eighty.
I'm gonna slide all the way to the right. So she can kind of.
And obviously the nurses cost them all.
How much do we get for them? I can't remember that.
Um, it's a great question. I'll have to look.
You remember?
Not that much.
We don't get very much.
No.
We don't get.
Like a half of an F T E or something?
No, 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 we get more than that.
No, we don't get funded for both of them. They get one point two.
Yeah, but it's really easy, I mean. The medical needs we have with kids right now are so high, especially with littles. We have to have. Nurses or having a hard time covering everything because we have kids in three buildings that have. The insulin dependent.
Point, point four per four hundred, I swear you told me that.
Two point two three total.
Point two three.
Yeah, but remember we have the nurses and then we have five health room assistants too.
Yeah, and that, that funds all of that.
That's all five health room assistants and.
And that's at the rate the state pays and not it.
Yeah, they're all in that same budget code.
Yeah.
So it's like, um, K through eight, it's like four hundred F T. And then nine through twelve, I think it's four thirty, four twenty or something like that. I'll, I can get you the exact.
But he's got it down here, so it shows. Let's say, we gotta keep our numbers, keep our line.
Looking at the person that works.
Yeah. So school nurses is two point two three F T E. But that covers the two nurses and five health room assistants.
We have two, um, nurses, we have two full-time health room assistants, three half-time health room assistants. So really five, like five and a half, and then one-on-one parents, don't even put in health, but.
That's for each school, but we get a total of two point two three.
Yeah.
Overall.
Over the whole district.
Yeah.
So two and a quarter.
The state funds.
Right.
Yes, and it's based on our enrollment.
And we, are we maintaining that? Are we still trying to hire more R Ns or?
Um, our nurses have asked for another nurse. Right now we have five insulin-dependent diabetics at River View alone. And those kids do not administer their own insulin and so. We have the nurse, a nurse that split between the high school and the middle school. And we have an insulin-dependent diabetic at high school that cannot or will not administer insulin. Um, it, you know, depends on the student. And then we just have a, now we have some students, I mean, this, this year we've had like five or six diagnoses. Of insulin-dependent diabetes.
So.
And littles, like lots of littles.
Free K, T K.
Yeah, we have an incoming.
T K, so kind of on a side note, I don't wanna get us down too many rabbit holes. But, um, if you want to read something quite fascinating, read about type one diabetes epidemic in the United States of America. Google it. The numbers are astronomically over the charts and with. The scientists are going.
Like what's going.
What's going on.
And it's, it's, um, I mean, and, and the, the little of the kids are the more fragile they are. So, um, like, yeah, we're having a hard time covering all of that. Most kids by the time they're upper elementary in middle school can manage their own, we can do a designated person to. If the parent agrees to do insulin, but it's a, it's a, it's a lot.
And it's something, um, kind of what we were talking about in the safety meeting. It's something we can't mess with. Uh, life-threatening, um, in momentarily, I mean, it can change in. A heartbeat, you know, I mean, something can happen when they're that fragile.
Yeah.
Okay. Classified and classified are the workers. Um, hang on.
So. Oh, names.
Oh, oh my God, I, I'm so sorry. I, I swear I hate those.
That's right.
Just keep it there. Uh, okay, so, um, these are our directors. Um, they also, um, their. Contracts are different, so some have bargains. All of them are not in the same directors. In, I guess you're on, you call it. Um, so they're a little bit all over the place also. Some get more V I B A than others, um, some have stipends depending on what for. Transportation has an on-call stipend. Um, I T has an on-call stipend, so does maintenance, um, and so does our athletic director. Um, and, um, yeah, so then that is that, this is their annual, including all of the stuff. And this is their benefit amount. Um, actually, if you scroll to the right. Keep going. So this is the cost breakdown of our directors. So we have, um, Fed. We have the business office. Um, district-wide maintenance. Um, uh, technology, food services, transportation, and then access. The only thing that we get any funding for is. I program funding for is special service. Now, is. Any questions on there? And the, and the, their increase is only a few points up also. That is classified. Um, if you want to pull up the coaches, we'll do teachers last. You know, this has been hot topic. Um, so luckily coaches are all out of the same code, they're all one hundred twenty-eight, so basic and extracurricular. We don't get any funding for that at all, that's purely funded on levy money. Um, so all of our, including our athletic director is funded purely off of levy money. So we've broken down, I broke down each program. Um, each season, the amount of coaches and their F T E. Um, per program. So obviously football is gonna be our highest. Um, cross-country.
Where's that F T E, please?
The F T E is on the left.
The second. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry, I was.
Uh, column D is F T E. So like for football, we have a couple of halftime. Um, and if you keep scrolling down, Ashley. So this is the high school, so this is a total cost, um, for the high school. Um, for all sports and that includes benefits. Um, so you see we have forty-five F T Es for high school sports. And then if you want to, um, click on the middle school tab.
How did we determine, how did you determine, you and I talked about this, but I don't remember. How did we determine estimated postseason pay? What did we use for our factor?
What we paid for, for winter? And then average that for the next three.
Okay.
Seasons.
I knew there was something that we used and I couldn't remember.
Yeah, so postseason pay is an insane amount of money. Um, they bargained. Before Kim, um, for a huge increase in postseason pay. We used to pay.
Hundred and fifty bucks a week.
And now we pay one eighth per week. For postseason pay, so it's.
Huge.
It's huge. One eighth of their total contract per week.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Um, so this is middle school. Um, same thing, football, obviously it's gonna be a lot less because their athletic program is a lot smaller. Uh, if you can scroll down to the bottom.
Um, let's talk about how we make a decision about an extra team or. Um, like when we have so many kids turn out, we're trying to make a decision. We don't like to cut at middle school, right? Because we want everybody to have an experience. Um, especially, uh, ninth grade kind of is the same way. We're gonna do a C squad or a freshman team. Um, those are very, very hard decisions. When we go to levy, right? We go to an E P N O levy, right? We're going about athletics and programs and. This, the experience for the child. We do everything in our power to make sure that we can do that. So we have some on here that we may not have to use, correct?
February.
Mm-hmm.
I know the dance program at the middle school, has it been two or three years there?
No, I started the dance program when I was athletic director, it's been about. Like twenty years. You just haven't been to the competitions, evidently I forgot to invite you, sorry. No, what happened was we used to do bowling and then there was an issue because we charged. Three dollars for bowling and we could not because it was a Title Nine issue and so I invented dance. And then we used to have a hundred kids, a hundred and ten girls, I mean, it's huge. And so they do competition, everything, there's other schools, districts that have it, so yeah, we have dance. I think there was probably twenty kids this year, but.
Has there ever been like social momentum at the middle school to bring over for a high school dance competitive team or it just hasn't ever carried over?
I, I, you know, back then, it was, like I said, we could barely fit them all in the gym, there were so many of them. And there couldn't be a lot of moving around because there was too many. Um, but. It just hasn't, you know, really stuck, although our cheerleading has become very popular and big. Yeah, so. I think the last time I did dance team was a few years ago and I think there was only one, so it was kind of a dance person.
So can we go back to the total for athletics then?
Yeah, um, Ashley, you took on the P H S tab. Okay, so this is the total cost, half a million for coaching. If we continue. With that quote.
Is there?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering. And maybe it was in a sheet that was shared already. But like, what the coach to athlete ratio is for each of these sports?
I think Ken bowled email that.
He emailed that out. Um, and we also looked in some, I think Jackson, if he hasn't, he has the W I A guidelines for. Um, contact versus non-contact versus. Like rec, guided, recommended guidance numbers.
So is that how our decisions are made as far as staffing levels? Is it at those recommended levels or?
Basically.
We try.
We try.
You know, so it, it.
The one who seems to suffer is track. It sounds bad, but it seems to.
Well, for sure, that probably at, at the middle school, but. When we, you know, you try, you need to be, try to be competitive, even though it's middle school. Um, but you have to consider safety, so you can put twelve, you know, maybe put. Twelve kids on a basketball team, it's harder to get everybody playing time, but you don't. Want to put twenty kids on a basketball team and, um, football, wrestling are the highest injury sports, um, so.
They have a lower ratio.
Yeah, I mean, we had a huge, you know, a bunch of kids turn out for baseball this year and a lot, with a lot of that, a lot of things died during COVID and like the momentum really has picked back up, so. It's great that kids want to participate, but then we also have to have somebody they can participate against. You can have a team, but if the other districts don't have anybody, you don't have anybody to play. So.
Sometimes Jackson will send us an email at the beginning, towards the beginning of center signup time.
Yeah.
And say, hey, if I can find. A decent number of games to play ninth grade or C squad or a six, seven, or a seven, eight combo. Do we have the funds to be able to coach, send it to do a coach? And that's kind of, so it's not just. Having the funds or having the kids, now we have to have, we have to have transportation. We have to have enough schools that have that other squad or that additional number.
Still even that, they probably might play them two or three times, maybe their season isn't ten games, maybe it's eight. Then they get, still get a chance to play.
Last question. Do. One more thing. Please. So, um, these are admin.
Their names were there, but it's.
Their names are, their names on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on. Sharon. No, I'm not.
You're still.
On screen. Who knew the final? There's different tabs.
Yeah, it's in a small district, but it's still respectful to not have their.
Okay, so I, I'm not waiting for you. So I did hide the names.
Yes.
They were hidden, they expanded.
Yeah.
I did hide them, I'm not.
Okay. No?
Okay. Okay, so our admin. Um, again, it's, we're just negotiating the three point seven percent I P D. Um, we have, so we went off of their twenty-three, twenty-four base salary. We added the three point seven percent. Um, some get longevity depending on how long they've been, uh, this right? Um, so this is, this is their base contract. This is going to be these two together, okay? Their total salary is their base plus the additional pay that they get. Um, but they've all bargained an extra day, so that is factored in here as well. So their total amount with the extra days is this column right here. This is their benefits. This is their V I B A amount. Their step amount. And so this is the total cost for each admin in this column right here. Um, and then again, their funding source. Scroll all the way over. Their total cost for our administrators. Um, we do get B P P funding, uh, for our C P director. And then, um, some migrants and bilingual funding for our, for our migrant directors. It's. Our admin and our principals. Um, we get funded very little. Um, for them also, I can give you the exact number when we talk about M S O Cs for the apportionment amount. Uh, but we're stuck with a huge portion of their.
Right.
Yeah.
So Delise, when, when you get to the point of like finalizing, I guess, everything, will you?
Yeah.
Will you break it out? Um, like, right, by dollars and say. This amount is, we, we get funding for this amount, this is the amount that the district's on the hook for.
Yeah, so I have a, an apportionment spreadsheet.
Okay.
Um, that I will do in the final and it'll show, it's basically what Jason has and so I go and I input all of our salary amounts for. All of our staff. And then it has a formula that shows what we're actually getting funded for and what. Local store. Yeah.
Yeah.
So when you, when you go over to the salary.
Uh, that's admin. If you pull search now.
Money.
Then if you want to like expand like N?
Yeah. She's like, I'm not gonna do that again.
You know, one thing, you know, for Brian and Michelle, I think. You know, and you, and Michelle, you're probably familiar with the apportionment type stuff, but. It's a very good tool to look at our budget. Um, and especially, you know, some of the positions within the district. And what the state pays and what they don't pay, it's, it's, um.
I open it.
Very, yeah, it's.
So when we talk about legislative actions. Or we talk, you'll hear, um, in the news, fully funding education or whatever. Um, there isn't one person in the legislature that would work as a principal at one F T E. I mean, it's, I mean, it's an okay salary, but it's, there is not one legislator sitting on that floor. That would be a principal. Alone, let alone for the amount of salary that they're willing to pay. And so, same thing with nursing. They give however much sal, even if it's a little district and you get a half of that because the district's small. If you use the salary number. If you use the salary number that you're working for, no nurse would work for that. So it's not necessarily the number, it's what they're using as the salary figure. Because they, if you look at, they go, oh, we give you six point four, five, two principles. Well, that's not too bad. But the dollar that the salary that they're basing off of is I mean, you wouldn't, we'd have no principles, that's all. Make less than a teacher does.
That, that amounts the same across the state?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a west side, east side?
No, it's also a minimum salary that you have to pay principal.
Okay.
Don't they call it a prototypical school model?
Okay.
So you can pull some number out of the thin air and.
Four hundred.
Like there's a minimum salary, but they don't even give you that much. Well, that's weird.
Love government.
And so I think when we, we talk about our neighboring districts or things we read in the news, um, and we talk about double levy failures and how excited and blessed we were that we passed our levy, right? Our community needs to know how thankful we are for the support that we got, so that we can keep our teachers and keep our staff in, it, does that make sense? Because there are neighboring districts across our, or, and even across our state that are experiencing double levy failures. And if you take our levy dollars, which we'll do in three weeks or three meetings from now, out of this is why you, it's not, I mean, it's, that's why their work that we have to do in the legislature is where the work has to come from.
Okay, so certs are, I mean, by far what we pay most on. Um, so Ashley, if you go out a little bit. So I have it broken down by teacher, by. So every teacher on the salary schedule is paid a different amount depending on how long they've worked, how many credits they have. And what degree they have, so they're kind of all over the place. Um, our enrichment hours, um, are the fifty-six point five hours that they get paid on top of their base salary. So, um, column G is their yearly base salary. So if you, um, are most experienced teacher, you pop out at one ten. Um, for base. And, uh, I think you want to scroll down so they can see all of our teachers. Um, we have it separated out, um, like grade, always in the name are hidden, so each teacher has their own endorsement. Uh, their own major also, uh, so these are just all of our teachers. And some of them are split funded. So if you want to scroll over to the right. And then up. So this is our cost breakout for all of our teachers. Um, basic ed teaching is by far the most, that twelve million. Um, but if you scroll down to the amount. This is how much our teachers cost, twenty point one million.
You know.
Uh, it's benefited, it includes all of their extra pay. Uh, it however, does not include subs.
Yes, so let, you have that on your cell a little further over, don't you?
But actually.
Right there.
Um, so these are our long-term subs. How much it's estimated to cost through the end of the year. Uh, I pulled reports of what they were paid through April and then, um, estimated the next two months. This is what our regular sub pay costed. We're paying.
Why don't we explain the difference to roving and regular?
So we right now, so this right here is we have five roving subs. So they show up to the building every single day, they're paid as a teacher, whether they have work or not. Um, and included in that cost also is a couple of long-term subs that we have. Um, that are subbing for various reasons, we have a teacher who's out on admin leave that has a long-term sub. And then a couple others. Um, so.
Not eternity. Eternity. And a medical.
Medical. Okay, so that's about an extra one point one million, so total with subs is twenty-one point two million for cert, just the base, does not include any supplement.
So let's talk about what, do you have supplemental tab? Okay, so I'll let, oh wait, so let's talk about the sub piece. Um. This is when we talk about twelve sick days. Personal days, right, we have to plan that those are going to be used. So that's the cost of those sick days. And, okay, so I just want you to know kind of where that mathematical equation comes from, we do use this year's as an example to keep pretty close, but we have to plan that every employee is gonna take their twelve sick days, their two personal days, or two, because we have to budget for that.
And then on top of that, you estimate like FMLA type leave as well.
Mm-hmm, no, we don't.
That doesn't cost.
Cost us.
Pay family medical leave doesn't cost us.
The sub.
Sub does, sub does. Right?
Right, yes, but we don't pay the teacher.
People might be out on extended.
Yes, yep. And I think that's what we were saying when she used the word admin leave, when we said, no, it's medical, that's that paid family medical leave. Person.
When someone goes out on FMLA, do we not pay them during that time?
Oh, it depends, FMLA, yes, so FMLA and PFML are different. Um, pay family medical leave, you get paid from the state. Um, and we stop their contract, however, you can supplement paid family medical leave with your sick leave. So if they want to go on paid family medical leave and they have four hundred hours of sick leave, they can choose to supplement, you know, because you only get ninety percent of your pay. They can choose to say, well, I'm gonna use eight hours per week of sick leave to supplement my medical. So there is some kind of cost. And also when they're on paid family medical leave, we still have to pay the benefit, have to pay their insurance, whether they have it or not. So, the cost. Okay, so this is supplementals. Um, yeah, he can make that.
Come on.
Okay, so these are all of our supplemental contracts. Um, we got rid of some supplemental just here also. Um, so, uh, column C is all of the programs. And again, depending on what program it is, it's either extracurricular or extra duty and it's a different amount. So we have a salary schedule for extra duty and extracurricular and depending on your years of experience, um, the amount changes and also if it's per DM or not, because some of these have a very high per DM rate.
Um, let me, I may push pause, will you explain, because you're better at this, the difference between extra duty and extracurricular? And why some have per DM, because you're the history major here, you're gonna talk about the history. Um, just can't explain it to.
So there's two different sour- two different extra salary schedules. And one is, um, things that connect to what they're doing in the classroom, so like our extra band performances. And, and, um, maybe then there's another one that, there's other areas in there like club contracts, those kinds of things. Um, there is a, there's some different pay rates on there for different things. Uh, some of it might be at per DM, some of it might be a separate kind of hourly rate.
Per DM is mainly used when it's academic in nature.
Not when you're going to supervise lunch detention. You don't get paid per DM for that.
That's an extra duty, you supervise lunch detention, you don't get paid.
But like a counselor extra day likes up there would be at per DM. Um, being part of the PHS leadership team is there's, they have like, you know, four, six spots that they get to have, um, teachers be as part of their leadership team, each, the building has that. Um, so there's, there's.
Four, then each teacher gets less.
Yes, there's a.
Flat amount.
It's never simple, that's why when, I think when people who have never done, um, payroll in a school district come, because when you do payroll, it's like, you work this many hours, you get paid, or this is your salary, you come and it's like in a district, it's like holy moly, there's so many different things, so, yeah.
A lot. Uh, so I think scrolling down, we'll just go through the rest of the supplementals, PHS extra day, leadership. Um, different advisors. Um, we have DECA, uh, different clubs, science clubs, bed teachers all get a two thousand dollar stipend. Um. All over the place, national boards, so we have four or five teachers.
Probably about that, no, some counselor, some.
Uh, and that's classroom, we get funded from OSPI for that. And they give us, um, who qualifies and who doesn't. Um, so you can see a lot of this and we'll see it when we go up here, can you go to the funding thing? A lot of it is, um, extracurricular. So this is all levy money, right here. That helps. So it's a, it's a big deal.
CTE does cover almost all of theirs. And the national board's money does come as pastor, thank you for saying that.
But like basically from Ag down, except the national board, uh, down to national boards is all CTE.
And he gets funded for all of that.
And so we'll see that one that, when we do the revenue.
Um, so if you want to go to the totals page.
She's like gun shy, she's like gun shy now.
For the teachers, their national certification, is that the main benefit that they give this?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yeah, because they have to pay to, to take the test.
Um, it's a process kind of, and they can pay, there is some cost to it and it takes quite a bit of time. Once they get it initially, then there's a like renewal process and it's good for, no, it used to be ten.
Oh.
Uh, might be five.
I think it's five now, or five or six.
Yeah, it used to be ten, but.
Take, every time you have to renew. Your national board.
Yeah, so that, you know, for eleven, and there's some years, maybe they get five thousand, sometimes six thousand. Eleven thousand is like the most, like last this year, it's eleven thousand, so depends on what they legislate your fund.
We did discuss this with a new employee.
Yep.
Um. And you're gonna probably say the num- the name better, but there are some programs that are nationally certified but are not recognized as national certification in OSPI.
Like they don't get funding.
So they don't get funding, so we are trying to figure out that, that's another piece that I'll be working on as a superintendent. You want the best servicing our most needy students, but yet you don't want to supplement them and say thank you to them. So that's kind of, doesn't seem real fair.
Well, and we, you know, we have positions in like our school site, speech and those kinds of places where those areas were, we're paying a lot of extra money. Because to like the USD, because the USD will pay the stipend. But we could save a lot of money if we paid it and didn't pay the USD and they worked for us. So. That's what we're, that's what we're working.
Yeah. Okay, so this is our, the full cost of everything, so if you scroll down actually. I did not label these codes, I will eventually.
It's teaching, that's why it's a big one.
Huge.
Surprise, we have to pay teachers and it's teaching, it's got this, the biggest one.
So. Um, can you make that bigger? Well, I broke this down a little bit, uh, this is our grand total without subs or coaches. Thirty-three point six million.
Three hundred.
This includes classified and certified. Of this thirty-three million, total basic ed that we have to come up with money for is twenty-two point nine million. And our program funding, so our CTE, our bilingual, our title one, everything that you get grants for is ten point seven. Um, so we have to come up with that number. Um, including coaches and including costs, this is a number, thirty-five point two billion. Um, our, I was looking earlier and I think our budget last year was thirty-four point eight million. Um, for salaries, but it did not include subs or coaches. So we're still, we're still sitting, even if we take out subs, we're still under what we budgeted last year. And we even included the IPD.
So Jason, I have a question here, go ahead, Jason.
So you said, uh, thirty-four point eight last year's what I got, but it did not include coaches or subs?
Not that at all, no, from what I was thinking today.
So my question maybe is how did, how did they get paid? Like where would it be hidden in the budget from last year, I know, and he didn't. I'm putting you on the spot here, but, um.
I think last year's budget would be especially hard to figure that out.
Because we were, I was trying to look for that earlier and I I can't, I couldn't tell you how.
So I guess that leads me to another question. If we look at, I don't even know where it's at, but if we look at our ending fund balance through, you know, the monthly reports and in what you've kind of um, projected throughout the rest of this year. If if we didn't pay for subs and coaches out of three thirty-four point eight? Why would our, how could our fund balance still, how's our fund balance gonna stay?
I'll have to, I'll have to do some work and pick it apart and see what she would have to be doing. You know, that, that fund balance report, it comes directly from Skyward, um, and we're, I mean, I think that we're gonna go over because there was no, um, the cost of coaches in general skyrocketed this last year and was not budgeted. Um. I unfortunately.
So you're saying the thirty-four eight that we have in this report? But yet you're saying thirty-four eight is what we're gonna spend?
I don't know what we're going to spend on some.
I thought, did we have a projection? Okay.
It wasn't just for herself, I can get the answer for you, I unfortunately don't have answer right now, um, but I can work on it and get that for you. It's, it's very difficult to try and pick apart that budget and figure out.
So I'm gonna ask a question here and as a superintendent, I want everyone who's listening to know I should know the answer to this. Everybody hear me? I should know the answer to this. If we're projecting the general fund, right? We've projected where our ending fund balance should be, correct? And that's based on the salaries we've already paid, correct? And what we're predicting to pay in May, June and July?
With revenue.
Right.
And you've gotten more revenue so far.
Okay. So our projections on our actuals are our own, yours and mine.
Yes.
What we can't, what we're gonna need to figure out is the difference between the, what Jason and I are looking at here on the budget side, right, Jason?
So, just an example, so for, for example, um, normally like my budgets that I manage, of course I have grant budgets, but I also have basic ed budgets. Like I normally would have, um, it, two years ago, about sixty thousand dollars for science, for science kits and those things. None of that money was budgeted last year by the previous business manager. So like a budgets that like, but there was no option but for us to spend that because it was gonna happen, so there were, like my budget accounts, there were some, they were so, um, not normal, that, like what she's saying is like, I don't know where that was budgeted because she may not really be a.
And that's why I'm saying to the people who are listening into you in the room, our projections and our revenues, we know that that is. We know that that is one hundred percent accurate, but to be able to explain. Why those numbers are different, I don't know, I mean, we can probably get down to some point. And figure out, but we may not be able to know where that sub numbers went. Is that a correct statement, Diana?
Uh, very much, so when money was put into the various buckets, so to speak, wasn't really put in the right, all the right places.
Do you think it was put somewhere, just put in the wrong spot or just left out?
Well, I mean, it all had to be put somewhere, um, but like, um. I think there was an effort to, um, make it simpler. So like, for instance, say I have ten basic ed budget accounts, maybe the most it was put in one instead of spread out into where it should be. To make it easier for tracking, is that?
So, look, an example would be there's approximately seventy rows of budget numbers right there, right? And I don't know that there was seventy rows last year. Where the bottom number may not be far off, but there weren't seventy rows.
Wasn't, the detail just wasn't there that the least is putting.
You don't think there was. Unbudgeted items, they just weren't.
No, I just don't think, right, so if, if you really think about it, if you're, if you took, um, I don't even know if you could get a calculator to do the number. If you took the budget sheet and you multiplied the different accounts to see how many possible account codes there are, it's. It's built, it's, it, I don't even know if you can calculate, but anyway, um, but. Knowing and understanding what every one of those accounts means and knowing and understanding why there needs to be money and. A, B, C, D, and what money needs to be there, um, that, I mean, we're just kind of, we're just making corrections so that it is clear. I don't think the money is anyplace inappropriate, I just think it just wasn't, but the, there just wasn't detail in the budget.
And our spending capacity is accurate.
Yeah.
Right, we know that, right, you can't spend something you don't, but you can't spend money that you don't budget to spend. So I don't, that's, I'm not a concern or a worry, um, and our ultimate goal is to increase our reserve, right, our fund balance. And, um, Delise and I are committed to spending detailed time like this. So that the tools that we have are. Accurate and. Explainable. I think is the other piece, would you agree with that statement?
Uh, definitely, like I said, it's not that, it's just, it's about detail. And, um, the detail just wasn't there. Wasn't that the money wasn't there, it's just, it might have been put into the wrong camp, but when you're talking about oh one hundred. It's still basic ed, it's oh one hundred, it's a huge amount of money and it might not be put in the right bucket. The money was still there, but the detail that we need to make sure that. Things like, so that we can track and say, well, okay, well, I, I spent, only spent thirty-seven thousand dollars and cents, I don't need sixty thousand in there. That's the challenge, like when things weren't budgeted, like put into the right bucket. So the, the, the lease is doing very much more careful detail and, um, whole process has been. Really good for me as, for my, in my position, so it's not all about me, but if it was.
So like, for example, our building, they should have their budget broken down by activity, by program. Um, and they were given one lump sum in their supply code. Um, and so I've been working with them throughout the year to balance their budgets, to move money in different places. So they know what to budget for, but unfortunately, what we've run into time and time again is there's just no. Budget to follow, we have the money, you can see it. But on paper, if you go and, you know, you're a DNA and you go to go make a purchase order, it's gonna show that you're over budget, but you know you're not. Because it just wasn't allocated.
Wasn't put in that bucket.
Yeah.
And I have a question. Early on that I was saving about being able to see the percentage increase from last year in each of these kind of subcategories. And I'm guessing from what you're saying, that's not necessarily accurate. Well, just for, just for all, for all of these areas.
Like this person, like the, I think for this year. I mean, you could do it, but it doesn't, it's not an accurate picture really of anything for this year, I wouldn't say.
Has been so difficult, it's been really, really hard.
And I will tell you, it's, it wasn't just this past year that that was the case, cuz I know when I was a building principal. Ultimately, we didn't give a detailed budget. We, we got received a budget and we just, it was all out of basic ed, so we really needed, we had to track our bottom line. So we weren't separating supplies from, you know, contract services from whatever, we, we weren't, so. That's different too, so Delise, so Delise's expectation of the principals and she's helping them to be able to. Keep track of it, cuz you, you, we really do need to know, did I spend seventy-five percent of my budget on supplies and so I didn't have, you know, cuz paper's so expensive and I didn't have. So I think that, that will be better, so that's not necessarily new i- in this past year. Um, but I know like for me, it was really challenging because I couldn't get information last year. Um, even to know what my budgets were. It wasn't until the lease came and I was like, uh, that's not gonna work.
Even have a budget.
No.
I didn't have a budget.
No.
Um, it was just.
All put into certain big pots.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a little bit difficult.
So I think about it, when I'm trying to help, um, principals especially, or a new director or something. You know, at your house, you know how much your house payment is or your rent, you know how much your car payment is, right? But a lot of times discretionary money, the stop at the grocery store doesn't always come out of the food budget, does that make sense to go? Or your, the hot box at the, right, at the gas station when you get a corn dog instead of making dinner, it doesn't really come out of that. And it, so an example would be like your house payment, your car payment, maybe your utilities, but everything else. You just spend, right? And so that would be an example, right? You still make all your bills, you don't have overdrawn checking account, right, you, you're not, not paying your bills. But if somebody said to you, how much you pay on for gas, you might get, say, I don't know. Right, I know how much my house payment is, I know how much my car payment is and my other big expenses, but your, your total, like if somebody just walked up to me and said, well. How much do you pay on paper products? I'm gonna go, I don't know, right, do you see, so what, what we're explaining here to those who are listening and, and to you here is. The total that we live on, we're not overspending, we're gonna try and put some money back in savings. Um, we don't have those kinds of errors, we just can't tell you. In twenty-two, twenty-three, how much was spent on paper products? But we'd like to be able to tell you in twenty-three, twenty-four, how much was spent on paper products. So we compare paper products in twenty-three, twenty-four to paper products in twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's kind of the Dave Ramsey envelope.
Yes.
Yeah, like, you know, uh, the money should be put in the right envelopes, it really wasn't. And so there's just a couple really big fat envelopes with a lot of money and then we just had to kind of deal with it.
And so that's, I just wanna make sure that, you know, when we're learning here and we're talking about all these budget codes and different types of reporting, I want the. The general to know, the general public and us sitting here, Delise and I are cautiously optimistic. And I'm chuckling because I get, when I, I chuckle when I get nervous, cha- cautiously optimistic that our reserve is going to be better than we found it. Okay, and now we also, and we do reporting next year, like next January. When we compare January twenty-three, twenty-four to January twenty-four, twenty-five, we both are gonna be able to say, yes, that's accurate. Right, because we're gonna know that ninety-nine hundred dot fifty-one, we're gonna compare those two numbers. And we're gonna be able to tell you exactly what the difference is and why. Maybe not why that it was paper and not pencils, but we'll at least know that the budget code was the right code and it was used the right way.
Boy, I think, I think this is awesome that we're getting this type of detail, you know. Um, and being able to track it, you know, in a more precise manner year over year. I have a little bit of a concern if, you know, if we're. We're projected to be about four hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars more in, in this than we were last year. You know, we're, our. Our ending fund balances. Projected to be at two point five and change. We're getting really close to the policy. Um, and I know it'll change because our, our revenues will go up and our budget will increase, but. You know, right now, we're actually. You know, right at the cusp of, of the policy. You know, and we set that there for purpose, you know, so that we didn't draw our reserves down too far that we wouldn't be able to. You know, to afford any emergency expenditures that may come up, so. I mean, I, I, I really like what, what I saw today, I'm just a little nervous about. I guess until we finish this year and, and look at next year, how, how this is gonna.
Do have, we're excited to say that, that ending, we have the paying ourselves back. From the trap. So that money is due to us. June, by June thirty, I think. So that's a pretty good sized chunk. Including the interest, so that's one. Um. Really being diligent on our rehiring. Um, I don't know if you noticed, there was a couple pink and green lines that you saw in there, that's some potential savings that we're still working towards. Um, we know, like you hear us talk in ASB, we can't spend it if we don't budget for it. So we'd ra- rather present to you thirty-five point two eight million and do thirty-five. Then have to come in and ask for a budget adjustment to thirty-five point three.
Right.
So we are going to, like good budget, Dave Ramsey, right, we're gonna. Budget low on revenue and high on expenses and come out better on the other end. And so that's what we're trying to also present. We, we just want everybody to understand, we have to really stick to what our plan is. I, I have to tell you, um. Delise, why don't you talk about the time spent, not necessarily meaning the hours, but the, a time spent in detail. The workshops you go to, the, um, open labs, how you've gotten to this detail?
A lot, a lot of hours. Um, I've been going to open labs at the ESD, I've done quite a bit, um, um, budget workshops through WOSCO. And also the ESD, um, but I think the biggest thing is, I mean, our. Three hour budget meetings, you know, once a week, we're sitting in Kim's office and. Going through staff and going through, picking out, you know, what days we're doing professional development on, so we don't have to pay them for these extra days. Um, we have a list of staff that, that are leaving, what, what money can we save through attrition and not fill these certain positions? Um, you know, and then also going through, through each bargaining contract and figuring out. You know, what the IPD is for each individual person, their stipends or additional hours. Um, the amount that benefits are going up, um, percentages, the amount of insurance we have to pay for employee. Um, it's been. It's been, it's been crazy and we're not done yet, we're not even close. So, um, but I mean, I appreciate detail like this, and so I hope that you guys do too. It would be, I would have a very hard time approving a budget if I didn't know what it looked like. Um, so I've just tried to be as detailed as possible, um, and I mean, I went through every single one of our employees. We accounted for every single one of our employees, um.
Why don't we, why don't you explain to him a little bit about the backside funding that you had to redo in account codes on, inside both of the systems? Just use my name as an example, just so you can kind of say what you would have to do, what you would find.
So what? Salary schedule, we had to redo the cert salary schedule, um. I had to redo it a couple of times, um, the first time I did it at three point nine. And then on the enrichment hours, the enrichment piece was incorrect. And so I had to go in and adjust the hours and then go in and adjust everybody's enrichment. Um, I had to, um. What else, there's been so much.
Ton of corrections, because we had multiple years where, so for instance. Like I have a, I had, say, I have a teacher at the middle school who's, who's, um, doing part-time, you know, teaching language arts and part-time bilingual. And so they're half in sixty-five hundred and they're half in basic ed. But they didn't do that last year, they just did this this year, well, it was not getting corrected. So he might have been, that person might have been full basic ed the year before, and so we're going back and we, I don't know, what do we do about? Forty different employees with account code corrections that were some, I was like. That person hasn't done that for three years.
Yeah, so we had to go through every single one of our staff members, every single one. Verify what they did, where they worked, code, um, and then we had to update ASOP because ASOP, I'm not gonna update.
ASOP is our, um, when you, is our absence program, so like if, if I'm a ma- uh, a bilingual teacher. And you take my sub job, Brian, you then have to be funded to bilingual, right? Well, those codes inside our, our absence management system were accurate.
No, so they were coming over and being paid through the wrong codes. So I don't even remember how I figured that out, but.
We had a, we, we, a custodian showed up on migrant.
Yes, that's what it was.
Budget code and it was like.
And it was because I was meeting with Eric about his grants, which hadn't been done either. And so I was having him go through and pick out like things that didn't look correct. Um, and we discovered that person and then we went through every single employee and so we had to do accounting adjustments all the way back. Through September for each.
Everyone.
Person. So if you have, if you're spun, funded three different ways, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was, it was a feat. So if I say that these numbers are really accurate, they better be pretty accurate, cuz we spent a lot of time fixing them.
It's really, it has been, I mean, Delise has bared the brunt of it, but it's been pretty, it's been a team effort. With the ladies in the office, with every, everybody, yeah. But it's taken us all together, like I get things, I can sit there and go, no, that person doesn't work there, no, that person. But there was like people that, we had like a teacher who's never worked at high school, but was showing up in high. Um, his basic ed, so it didn't matter as far as the bottom line, but it's like.
Going back to that envelope, right? It's the bottom line, it was basic ed, it was the same place, but we couldn't really say.
All our security guards, except one, were in the wrong building, because I think someone just copied and pasted a code, so the location wasn't right, so. There's a. It's been a, a little bit of a task, mostly.
An example that we've learned also is, and we can share this, and I think this is good, is. There's a computer program, we talk about working smarter, not harder, that when you are a substitute. And you fill out a time sheet, right, it should go into our, can, we've been data entering those. And we're going to not do that for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're gonna let the computer do the work. We'll do checks and balances like you do, but we're gonna let the computer do the work, yeah.
I think too, like, it's been so chaotic since I started, just trying to get budget right and. I, we have a lot of processes that we need to change. Um, we're going to be in a stone age, unfortunately, still in, in a lot of our processes, like.
Data entering.
Data entering every single absent. Every single person. Um, and so we'll, you know, we're, we'll be working on those this summer and implementing them for twenty-four, twenty-five. It'll, it'll get better.
It is, it's getting better right now already.
I think, um, I mean, obviously, you guys have put a ton into this and, I mean. Just listening to you guys, I mean, it's basically you guys started back at ground zero almost. Uh, so yeah, I mean, moving forward, this thing will be. Should be pretty slick.
And I think the public needs to hear what you said, right? We have some policies, we have to make sure that we don't mess with, that we don't. Make an error or void or, you know what, I, I don't know what you really do when you say you don't meet the policy or whatever, but we have to make sure we do those things and, and. Diana and I are committed, Diana, Delise and I, Diana, Delise, Sean and I, all of our directors were committed. That when we walk into a meeting like this or we see somebody that we're like, yeah, we know what's going on, right? It's accurate, we don't do that, it's kind of like that open book, right? Here it is, you know, and yes, we're gonna make mistakes, that's not what I'm talking about, but I'm talking about like, here it is. Look it over, right? We want that feeling, we want that confidence in the work that we do, that an- anybody could walk in and say, right? Like, wow, it's, it's on, you know, I think if I was doing it, I might change that face day order and I might do it to this code. I mean, because that's different people, right? But it's all accurate.
I think, you know, one thing that Kim and I say a lot is we can't do anything about what's been done in the past. I think, you know, one thing that Kim and I say a lot is we can't do anything about what's been done in the past, we can change everything moving forward.
So I asked a question, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before's budget. Is, I know that as you start to code things correctly, I think you mentioned the, somebody who's coded to the high school and they should have been somewhere else. Could, uh, could we get a cost per built, like what each building costs us? Not only in running the electricity, but all the way down to. And I think that's important that we see that, cause you, there might be some spike that we don't know about in something. You know, maybe it's super low here, but it's giant at Witstran, I mean, you know something.
So I don't know how it came about, kind of like the other thing, somebody's, so. We were pulling. Was it phone bills or something, and then we, it caused us to look at something else and I said something like. There's no way that O P H S is basically empty, we have a little corner in it, right? We do don't want it to freeze, but we're not heating it to eighty degrees, and yes, it has no insulation, but it was like. It was like, and it was all good in the wrong places. And so we're we're like.
Wasn't really the high school.
It wasn't really, you know what I'm saying, but it was in the wrong places, and then. Also, like you hear, um, I, and I realize we're not Seattle, but bear with me for a second, you hear Seattle Public Schools saying they're gonna close. Ten elementary schools or something, what you're talking about is how do you make the decision? To close ten elementary schools if their enrollment is down at half and yet their expenditures are so high, those are, you can't make decisions unless you have. That's an example, right? Or how do we know if it's, um, we need to. Staff this building differently because of the ratio of teacher to student or.
Right, well, we have to look at that too, because it's, um, when you have attrition. And you say, oh, well, we're not gonna replace that person, but that doesn't mean. We don't need to then look at the other four places and say, well, really, should we be moving someone then, because. You might have a bunch of people retire out of one building and then, you know, so you have to be fair and really look at that with Perez. Your office staff.
Um, you have graduation requirements, right? And so we'll just use world language or art or something, right, you have a graduation requirement that you have to have world language. And you're trying to absorb some through attrition, but your Spanish teacher, you can't not fill the Spanish teacher. Because it's a graduation requirement, right, or world language teacher, doesn't matter that Spanish, world language. So that's another example, right? Like you have, and that's where it's so important that our teams work together. Uh, we talk all the time about I T and. Uh, we're kind of going down another rabbit hole here, but districts are getting, um. Multi-factor authentication for students now. Because the bad guy is getting in through students now. Right, so what does it cost to put in multi-factor authentication for students? How young do you teach that, right? Because we have kindergartners using laptops, right? How do you teach that, right? Think about it, how many times have you ever done multi-factor and it says choose the crosswalks? And you get an error because you didn't choose that one little crosswalk that has the bus and you don't connect. Well, that's what multi-factor authentication is, and what if they tell you to choose crosswalks and the child doesn't even know what a crosswalk is? Now, that's probably a for example, but you know what I'm getting at, right? Or light poles, what do you consider, oh, stoplights, do you guys ever get the stoplight? And I don't know whether to include this one in the little diagram, because it's a pole. So those are all costs that we're incurring, that we have to plan for, but we don't even know what those costs are yet.
I really think with. The correct information, we can make better decisions, know what's going on and. It's it's never great to clean up somebody else's mess, and you try to clean up. Somebody else's mess and then present the information, you've done a really good job, I appreciate it, I think we can, everybody can do the job. And make, you know, decisions based on it, if you don't have the right information, you can't make a right decision.
Very true, thank you, I appreciate that.
I I really appreciate the level of detail that you're tracking. I know firsthand how awful it is to clean up. And but I'm also really appreciative to know that I I can save myself a lot of hours, because I've been going back through prior year budgets and trying to like. Bend different lines and wondering like, why is it so high now, and it was never high before, so now I know that's bad data. Well, and what, it will be really beneficial in the future to look forward like and say. Oh, I can actually look at this information and make decisions based on it.
We do want you to be our partner, though. Um, like if you happen to look at a total. I'm gonna be very transparent here, if you're looking, so there's supposed to be twenty items and there's only two, but the total is something? And the total's way whacked out? You need to pick a phone call, because. Did we make a mistake? Is something in the wrong place, right? Let us answer the question, we like the questions, because you help us. Make sure it's your our check and balance, to be very honest, right? We work for the school board, we work for the community, we want our checks and balances. In in these recorded meetings and where people are listening, we want you to be our checks and balances. We are only as good as the people who help us be better.
I did have one question about the budget, um, that I didn't see in there, I'm sure it's somewhere in there. And I don't know what the terminology is in the school district. I'm familiar with it being called terminal leave, do you budget for those costs, like when an employee leaves? That they're usually owed some sort of payout for. I don't know what it is, but sick leave or annual leave or, you know, whatever, whatever their leave balances are.
If I retire and I have a a certain amount.
Right, is there, is there a certain amount in the budget, you know, every year that you estimate?
No, um, that's a great.
No, we don't, um. I think there's, there's, each contract has a little bit, like if you announced you're retiring early, you get a so much amount. I think we could probably go back and look at past history and say the average is. Four point two people announce early retirement, so we need to budget that five thousand dollars.
When they were, when they actually do retire or leave, they get a a payout of some type. They do, so they get their sick leave, um, cashed out at a one to four ratio, um, and it gets. They don't get the cap, it gets, um, paid to Viva, so it's pre-tax. And the only people that cash out vacation, no teachers get vacation. Um, and so it's, it's just admin and like our our classified staff. Um, but they don't get to cash out their vacation. I I, there's only, there's only certain contracts that allow for cashing out a vacation and it's all admin. Directors.
Yeah, but like they're.
Probably not a big liability. No, no, but we do, I mean, I do, um, have a compensated absence report that I do for our sick leave liability. And that gets sent to O S P I every year, um, I I have the one from this last year, I can send it to you if you want. Um, and that just goes by, um, who's eligible to cash out? You're not eligible to cash out your sick leave unless you have.
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days or twelve, eight, twelve eight or fourteen, forty hours. Um, so even if you're a teacher and you go to, we don't cash out your sick leave. It it gets transferred to different districts.
As long as you're in Washington State, your sick leave goes with you.
Yep, but we don't cash it out, so the only time we have big cash outs like that is when they retire. And then our sick leave buyback every February, um, but. It's like, uh, that's also a wonderful and not a lot of people.
Do it.
Do it at all, cause not, I mean, we have very few that, um. Yeah, exactly.
Deanna and I, if we ever get really sick. Yeah, but when we get really sick on our, you might not have, we both have almost a full year. So we get really sick on the same year.
And we don't miss work very often.
Yeah, that's part of it too, we don't use them, but, yes, so there isn't a mathematical equation, but it's not very large. Mainly because when you change the circuit, your sick leave goes with you.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of the E S Ds, and we don't pay into the pool. But a a a lot of districts will pay what's called a compensated absence fee. And it's, it's based off of how many, um, employees you have. But it gets, it's at your local E S D, and so districts pay into your local E S D, and then. When you have a bunch of people that retire, you can then dip into that pool for their cash outs.
Um, another thing, we're self-insured, right? So L and I is self-insured in education. So we pay, our L and I goes to. One twelve, so Washington State's self-insured. Our teachers are.
Workers' comp also goes to one twenty three. We have a pool at one twenty three for workers' comp.
Eric question, probably for you, Kim, to talk about, but I read an article this last week about. That loss of S R funds and how it's really impacting districts who hired a lot of staff using those funds. So how are we being impacted by that?
Well, we didn't do that.
We didn't do that. So, so an example, though, and Sean's sitting here, an example where we will fill an S R cliff. Is our technology that's out one to one, it's gonna have an end of life. So ours, our S R money was used for like that one to one ratio. And some of our technology and and different pieces, so when that technology has end of life. I hate to say this, but I'm happy that we're gonna have to deal with a computer, loss of a computer and not a loss of a human's job, right? But that's an example of an S R cliff.
We, we also used a lot of S R money to, we, we curriculum, which that was learning recovery piece we had to do. And then we used a lot of it for the systems like heating and cooling systems because of health in our buildings. And that helped with our construction, we didn't really hire people, what we, we did do some paying like time or things like that, but.
No, and I just did an S R report for O S P I last week, and we only had two staff that were paid out of S R. And it wasn't a lot of money, and they, and they weren't hired, they had been here for a while and.
Yeah, so the the districts that hired people, it's, we, we've never been a district that hired on soft money. Because you just can't hire on soft money, cause then you gotta have a job for people, and that we don't like to fire people, so, um. Yeah, we just have never done that. And we don't add eleven million dollars.
Well, that was the benefit of, you know, like previous boards and, you know, some of the people that are no longer here. That's one great thing that, you know, we didn't go after people like some, some of the other folks did, so.
Yeah, I mean, there would have been some services and extra pay around things like summer school and things like that, but not, it wasn't hiring new people to work all year.
Oh, I guess we did a little bit of summer school with that too.
But that gave people more money, not taking their job away from them when they're.
I mean, timing wise, it really, for us, it really did benefit us because of construction and because of critical adoption, like I. We wouldn't have been able to do some of the things that we did without it, so.
And a good example of that, um, going back to my real simple terms. You know, we're gonna. Buy a car that was fifty thousand, well, we used S R money to buy a sixty thousand dollar car because it had more features. Right, but we didn't buy two cars, and now we have to sell one, because we can't afford the gas to put in the second.
No, so, I it really, I I mean, it was great to have that so many, but it really hasn't been a. Paying for us, like others.
We, we're gonna have a technology piece and we need to do some curriculum, and those are gonna be two things. That we're gonna need to figure out a way to do, after we get our facilities review. That'll help us, so we can figure out some budgeting and some planning, but. We're gonna, we're gonna be diligent and be able to figure out some solutions, they may be smaller, but they're gonna be able to be some solutions.
Maybe one question or thought, and I I know we've talked about this, Kim, but is having, you know, we talk about curriculum. All the time and it's so old and outdated, and we're still, we're slowly working on it, but what's the first thing to cut when you run a. You know, you have a difficult budget, right? Um, is trying to be diligent in at least building a pot, you know, separate fund for that we can just put money in. That's just for curriculum, and I I'm hoping we can start that.
Year, our our secondary science is working really hard and. We've, we found some good things, I don't know, you know, expense, it's not gonna be as expensive as adopting, um, E L A is super, super expensive. Um, but we have to, like, we have to do something with science, we have to, so. We need to do, we're doing six twelve science right now, but we need to do K five science. And we need to do history and social studies and, um, P G and health. And I mean, like, there's so many and our math that is newer needs to be revisited. So we have to.
Well, I'm hoping we can just start building, build a new fund into the budget.
Construction projects, we have to have a, you know. It's like uniforms, you can't wear the same uniform for twenty five years, so.
Have to redo the football helmets, yes, it is. So, Delise, I wanna ask that question, because this is one I don't know, you know how we have. A capital projects fund and we have a vehicle fund, right? Can we, is there anything that says we can't commit a certain percentage or can we create a curriculum fund?
Yay, um, and we can't create like a curriculum fund, because the funds are created state. But we can create our own budget money, I can create any kind of code, we can have.
Be an assigned dollar, like, if you look at your financial, you know, the financials, unassigned or assigned, we can make it.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking, right? So like, if, and we're probably gonna always have to spend it, but an example would be as if we say, thinking, going back to Dave Ramsey. We're gonna put two dollars in that curriculum fund every month, and we're not going to buy the curriculum until there's money in the fund. Right? I mean.
Well, that's the only way to do it.
If we're gonna stay on top of it, right?
It it can't, when we're in it, this is education, we have. So that, but we are where we are because curriculum was cut, because it's easy to go, oh, not that two hundred thousand, or that three hundred thousand. We can get by, well, that, that's put us where we are now.
Right.
Twenty, started twenty years ago, and that's put us where we are now.
It'll be in the M SOX report.
I haven't seen that yet from Billy.
Was there any other questions on this?
The, the five, I'll I'll call them full-time subs with the district. Are there? Is there a number of days that they don't find a classroom?
Not often, um, then there, so there's, but that is a a thing we've talked about, that consideration about. If that's giving us the bang for the buck, we did that during like post COVID, because. We couldn't even get certain, like, some people wouldn't even sub. Um, but, uh, there, I mean, they keep them busy, they're their fir- like first go-to, but I know there's times where.
I know, that's hard, I mean.
Yeah, and but we, like at the middle school, I was, I was there one day when they're building sub, and he was working in life skills. They put him in life skills to help the students, so. They still put him to work, but it is more expensive than our day-to-day subs, so.
They get paid as a teacher.
Well, they get a hundred, they get, it's less than. Is one seventy five?
The roving get two hundred a day and regular subs get one.
Well, that could be, and maybe it got increased, but it was one seventy five initially, but then, you know, we're also paying benefits of Amy and all that. And I mean, our building setups are helpful, but, um, that's an area we can consider.
So it's just a lot.
Yeah. Um, my last question, I guess, is related to athletics, does, yeah, leg department. Like, do they have numbers on income, like game?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so, you know, well, we're working with Jackson. Um, so we have like a preliminary budget, and for the sake of Jackson, his budget is also a mess.
Yeah.
And so he's starting from scratch, and so we're really, really starting athletics from scratch, and so twenty three, twenty four will will be a really good year.
Not a mess because of him.
Yes, Jackson's amazing, we love Jackson. Um, so we'll have a better idea of like what the actual number is and what. Right, his revenue is for his gates at the end of this year, uh, well, really in next month. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll have a better idea, we'll have a better idea then, um, but he has, I mean, he has his. Uh, uniform rotation all scheduled out, his football helmets all scheduled out. Um, and so we do have numbers for that, but I don't have an answer for revenue, but we'll know. Pretty soon.
Okay, awesome.
So when we, so I just, I did a sidebar conversation, I want everybody to know what I was talking about. There was literally nothing in the athletics budget. Pardon?
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars. Now, so once again, the total dollars was there, so we had to use it out of, 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 of a general fund. And we, there was no, when we coded the very first dollar spent to athletics, it said you've overspent your budget.
There was nothing in.
There was nothing in the pot. Now, the overall pot, we had the money, but, so we have no way to compare. If this year was more successful, less successful, spent more money, didn't spend, we don't have a tool. It was literally zero. And that's not an exaggeration, is it?
No, no.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm not over speaking. Sometimes I, I'm a little too zealous, but that one was zero.
Any other question?
I just appreciate all, all your work, cleaning all this up.
She's amazing, I keep telling you.
Yeah, you guys did a tremendous job, so, um, I do have, I just thought of another question, unfortunately, but, uh. You know, we, we've talked about the A S B budget a while, right? And it's got a little ton of money and, and of course it goes to all these programs. How are, how can we get the programs that raise the funds to spend the funds on the programs?
We actually, when we met with both the, the high school and middle school A S B, and so exactly what we told them. They need to, they need to spend it. And they also weren't aware that they could spend money from previous years. Um, and so there's a few, few things with that, but we encourage them to spend money. Yeah.
So the way A S B is designed, I'm gonna say you're the, let's just pretend the class of twenty twenty-four. You do things your freshman year or whatever, you remember the old senior gifts or remember the senior trips, those kinds of things? So you earn that. And then you do these celebrations at the end and whatever's left, you'd buy your senior gifts so that you're not leaving any money in the pot. Because you'll never get it anymore, right? Well, that's that concept. So in, if you read Wasbo rules or guidelines, I hate to use the word rules, guidelines. If you're a freshman in F F A, by the time you're a senior, that F F A money that you've done things with should be spent. Now, the new freshmen are earning money, so it's supposed to be kind of evolved, revolving, right? But it's not supposed to go up and not spend.
Right. Well, in the class of twenty twenty-four is leaving, but like F F A is still there next year, so. They always like, we're gonna have some startup money and it's not gonna, yes, but they. And it, remember, kids are setting the budget and we can try to guide them, but they will. I'm gonna raise ten million dollars, we're gonna spend nine million dollars and then it's forty-five dollars and thirty-five dollars. So, um, you just know, you know, they always go over and then sometimes, you know, some of the activities they planned, so. Uh, everybody overestimates, I know they do. They all overestimate because of the spending capacity. And then, yeah, so. I think it better, we'll work on it.
Alright, well, thank you. Um, any other question? Alright, next, uh, future meetings, we'll have regular board meeting next Wednesday, May twenty-second, right here in the Proster Library Workroom. Six P M, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I had saw that too, that it was on Thursday.